Number twelve, twenty twenty-two Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for the Town of Southwick, September twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Those in attendance, myself, Russell S. Fox as Chairman, Vice Chairman Doug Mogul, Clerk Jason Perron, Chief Administrative Officer, Call Jay Steinhardt is on Zoom, and we have Administrative Assistant Solak here with us, Robin Solak here with us. Before we begin, if we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Paul, if you can lead the talk.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic, which contains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the first thing we have on the agenda is public comments. If anybody that I'd like to make a statement to the Select Board and opportunity to do so, I ask if you'd like to make a statement that you stand and state your name and address. Is there anybody in this room at this time that wants? I got a hand up.
Thank you. Bert Hanson, one fifty-three, Moore Binding Road, also Chair of the Agricultural Commission. Later on in the agenda, there's an item about an open meeting law complaint that I filed, and I know this, it wouldn't be discussion at this time, but I just want to make a couple of quick forms about that. One is I don't like filing complaints. Don't make friends really that way. But there were appointments to the Agricultural Commission recently that were not specifically on the agenda and that I was unaware of. So I filed a complaint. I believe the appointment process in town needs to be a lot more open and a lot more fair, and my complaint helps with that. It's worth it.
Is anyone else in this room? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, there's one, Mr. Chairman, Joanne.
Joanne, if you could please state your name and address, please. Joanne, can you hear us?
Yep, I had one you, sorry. Joanne LeBlanc, thirty-eight Reservoir Road. I just want to make a statement again, and I seem like I'm getting old hat here, but in the past, at previous Select Board meetings during the public comment time, there have been residents that have asked questions, but they've been told that you don't allow questions. I'd like to know why that is, because it is allowed with other boards that I attend. Residents have said that there should be a way to receive answers to poised questions. At the last Select Board Meeting, Mr. Perron spoke about how this could be addressed, and he offered to take the lead in setting up something so that the residents could get answers. But, Mr. Fox, you did not only acknowledge his offer, but you turned your head away from him and looked down at the desk. You're not representing the townspeople, and I hope that people remember this. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on Zoom?
Not that I can see, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a couple of minutes before our first appointment. Let's quickly acknowledge payroll warrant number two, three, zero, five dated eight, twenty-nine, twenty, twenty-two, in the amount of two hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. Acknowledge payables warrant number two, three, zero, nine, B dated nine, six, twenty, twenty-two, in the amount of five hundred fifty-five thousand, twenty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents. Need a motion to accept the minutes dated eight, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two.
So moved.
Seconded. We'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, vote to accept the minutes dated eight, twenty-nine, twenty, twenty-two.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
I need a motion, Executive Sessionment, dated eight, twenty-nine, twenty-two.
So moved.
Seconded.
A roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
If you could pass those back, please.
Mr. Fox, there was a couple of people that I just let into Zoom, and while we were doing public comments, I might have missed them joining and was a little lax letting them in, so with your approval to ask if anyone else on Zoom has any public comments and to go back and take those.
No problem. Is there anybody else on Zoom now that everybody has been let in that would like to make a statement?
Yes, if I may, Michelle Pratt, one fifty-two Berkshire F.
Okay.
Thank you so much. That was very considered. I appreciate that. I was waiting there for a while, and I appreciate that opportunity. I'm just hoping tonight to hear the update regarding the North Pond property from the meeting with the state and Concom and the chief and hear if there's any headway made on a plan for caring for that property. And then the other piece was, I didn't see it on the agenda, I don't think, but there's been so much concern about the E. coli issue this summer, and so hoping that, I think Doug, maybe you were following up with Alex White about that, so love to hear about that. And again, I haven't discussed this at a CRC meeting, but if there's an opportunity for volunteers to help with water testing and possibly even if there are costs, I can't volunteer either of those things without talking to our membership, but I would imagine people would be in favor of either one or both of those things. You know, please, please let us know that. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on Zoom? Didn't get a chance. All right, then we're going to go to our first appointment, and that is with the television, yeah, cable TV. Ad hoc committee. And I know that you have one member here with you and one on Zoom?
Yep.
Okay, if you want to just do the introduction.
Paul Conley, Chairman, Tom Bangston's member, and I believe Sue Fox is on Zoom.
Okay.
Thank you. That's your ad hoc cable TV committee. And we met last Thursday night to finalize. We've had five or six meetings. We met last Thursday with Eileen Leahy from Comcast and Tammy Colick, our attorney, and our board members. We finalized, we had a few i's to dot and g's across. We're basically looking at the same contract that we have been five years and one point seven five charge to the thing, which is no change to the subscribers. As you know, we go into the contract with both hands tied behind our back. There's not a whole lot we can discuss. We can't discuss channels. We can't discuss rates. But other than that, it's basically the length of the contract and the charge to the users as far as the money that goes back into support Channel fifteen and the other things. So we finalized it Thursday. I don't, I'm not sure whether you have the updated contract.
We do.
It's okay. So we're good with it. We approved it. We're, you know, presenting it to you tonight. I know there's like two weeks left in the contract before it expires, so.
So you make your recommendation.
Our recommendation is for the Board of Selectmen to accept the contract as, you know, presented.
Okay.
Any questions? I got one, I guess. I think a lot of people would be curious, since I'm new, I want to ask it.
Yep.
Why is it always only Comcast?
They're the only game.
They're the only ones. Is it because they're the only ones that want to come?
That's it. Well, I'm sure that there could probably be others, but unless you want to invest several million dollars to, yeah, Comcast is the game, just as much as EverSource or, you know, Verizon. There's a, I'm sure anybody that wanted to step up could come in if they want to put the money up, and we.
I just, you know, it's one of those things.
It's a very logical question. I mean, you know, there's only so much.
You're right. I'm not going to say.
There's only so much space on the phone pole. I mean, but no, they're it. They're the ones. I mean, we started out with Continental Cable Vision, and it's evolved and been bought into that, 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 that. So here we sit today. Yeah, I mean, that's the reason why we have Ford cars and Chevys and Chrysler's, and it's what the market will bear.
So nobody, just nobody else wants to come? Is that what?
I, no one else has ever come before our board with a, you know, presentation.
Because I've always, you know, people have asked me, well, if you want to think of Cox.
Well, I believe that there's, there's another group that's studying high-speed internet type of a thing, and I don't want to venture into whatever that might be. I know that our task was to just do our deal with Comcast and see, make sure that the town of South is getting a fair deal. And like I said, we go into the fight with both arms tied behind our back.
I'm not questioning that.
Because we can't discuss, you know, our programming, and we can't discuss money. So basically, we discuss, they want a ten-year contract, we won't give them a ten-year contract. I'd like to give them a one-year contract, but it's not feasible, because as soon as we got through this tonight, tomorrow we will be discussing next year's contract. So we do the five-year deal, and the amount of money assessed to the users, and that money goes to support the peg channel, you know, Channel fifteen. There is an option as for a second channel somewhere down the line in a contract with them, and that's just about the best we can do.
All right.
Okay, that's fair enough.
I said, being new, it's something I wanted to know. I know that's something I always hear out in the public. It's like.
We'd like to, when you're thinking, we could do really great things, but like I say, you go into the fight and both hands are tied behind your back and.
Do what you can do with it.
Only do what we can do, and that's the thing you have in front of you tonight, so.
And section two dot two of the contract itself of Article two is the term of this non-exclusive renewal license. So if anyone else wanted to come in here and start their own cable system and go and put the wires on, on the poles and lead out to everyone's house, there's nothing in this contract that prevents anyone from doing it.
Right, absolutely.
That's the reason why those poles in Westfield are getting taller. Because you have to have.
Space between wires.
Charlie Denlop explained all that to me as Emergency Management Director. Yep. And we have short poles.
Yeah, some of them. Some of them, so, yeah, that's the, that's the deal.
All right.
So.
Any other questions or comments?
Well.
All right. First of all, let me thank you. I know it's a thankless job.
Absolutely.
You've been stuck with it. I know Sue's been stuck with it the last time also, and apparently you're our future, so, so stay healthy.
As we all know, serving in town government is a thankless job for anybody. Happy to do it. Hope everybody's happy with it. It is what it is, and, you know, it's.
All right, well, thank you very much.
You work quite well.
I'll accept the motion this time to accept the recommendation and to sign the contract.
So moved.
I will sign it.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, gentlemen, let's sign them, because they'd like to have them for tomorrow.
Yes, they would.
Gentlemen, you have a sparkling evening. All right, again, thank you very much.
You guys.
Not a problem.
Thank you, Mrs. Fox.
Thank you.
Yeah, please. Thanks, Jason. Robin.
Would knock out your, your exact session on your agenda.
Did we do it?
We didn't do the exact. You did the two, there was two meeting minutes, which we did, right? Did he do the exact?
Yeah, I thought he did.
Can you send him back down?
Yeah, we already sent him back down.
Okay.
Sorry, Doug.
I got confused with the Zoom.
That's okay. That's okay. You were watching. You're trying to do two things at the same time. We appreciate that.
Thanks.
All right, can we? Okay, I don't think we have time enough to start this, so what we're going to do is in a minute or so, we are going to be meeting with Hudson Drive Marijuana Facility Business Plan. So I see Mr. Delatorre here. If you want to come up, and your attorney is going to be zooming in. All right.
Oh, there he is. He's waving.
Okay.
So Paul Delatorre. Southwick Greenhouse.
All right.
Twenty-seven Hudson Drive. This is my consultant Ezra.
Okay, and Ezra, just for the record, if you could please state your name.
Sure, I am Ezra Parzibock of Northampton, Massachusetts.
Yeah. All right, we're going to give you the floor or Ezra the floor, whoever wants to speak.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak on this. Thank you, Board, for giving us a chance to talk on it. Paul actually is looking to do a very small cultivation site for cannabis. His Southwood Greenhouses is zoned, and he pursued an HCA actually, I don't know, eighteen months ago, a couple of years ago, and then had a team that he was going to do, and that sort of evolved. And now he's back doing just a smaller project, and he will need to go through the whole licensing process and build out, et cetera. But the very first step is the host community agreement. Fortunately, if the Board is interested, we did hold a community outreach meeting, which is a state requirement, and we had a lovely visit from Officer, can't remember his name, Paul. Do you remember? I just remember his first name, Ryan. He was a police officer from Westfield. He was the only one who came. So we had a good conversation, so it didn't seem like there was much opposition from a butters or anything like that. You hopefully all saw the business plan. I'm happy to answer any questions about the market. I'm a consultant, and I get people licensed and help, you know, build these companies and buy and sell them and whatnot. So, but Paul's is a pretty small operation.
Paul, did you want to say anything?
Um.
Because I know I'm familiar.
Yeah, you're familiar with it. I've been working on this project for quite a while. I got some, I already started putting in electrical. We have some high-speed internet already installed. I've been working with Griffin Greenhouse Supply on structural interior designs, and so it's a little more advanced than it.
Right.
You know, we're moving along.
This is the site of former Rose House that operated on Hudson for decades.
Decades back in nineteen eighty-three, I started growing roses up to about ninety-seven, and the market was tough. The market got tough. Wasn't profitable. You can import the roses much cheaper than growing. So here we are.
Okay. Doug, you're a resident expert on this. You have any comments or questions at this time?
That's a tough moniker, the resident marijuana expert, but no, we've done a, you know, I was on the Marijuana Subcommittee when we had it, that brought forth the zoning. We've been and been kind of trying to follow along with all the ever-changing legislation from, from the state and the Cannabis Control Commission. In fact, I have an update that I'll cover under old business tonight regarding a bit of an update that came out of the last legislative session, especially in regards to host community agreements and, and there's some, some, some changes to the law that are coming in that regard or that were made. So we should talk about that, but we should continue with, no objection to continuing the discussion on, on a host community agreement for this site, and in the interest of full disclosure, I work right across the street, literally from this, from this location. But I don't feel that would affect me in any which way, given the use and how that's going to work there from the proposal as read. But yeah, we should just continue down the process. The thing you have to be very careful with now is with the, the impact fees. A lot of towns have found themselves in a hot mess, because they just took a straight-line number as a percentage off the top as an impact fee. But as always, and we went through this with ours, with the one that went in down, that is going to go in down the south end.
Correct.
And we talked about this at length, but it's fair worth repeating, the impact fee has to be based on the measurable impact to the community. So, and, and I remember having a conversation with that person, and we've asked the same of this guy, and it's, it's kind of in here with his revenue projections, because they said, oh, three percent. Three percent of what, my friend? We had no idea what their revenue would be. We also have to try to put together a rough estimate of what the impact of Mr. Delatorre's facility will be on fire, police, and other town services, because the impact fee has to be commensurate with that cost. So if you say this used to grow roses, and that had a cost of a thousand dollars a year in police and fire and everything else, and marijuana is twelve hundred dollars, well, then his impact fee should put, in all honesty, should be two hundred bucks. That's how the impact fees are supposed to be. A lot of cities and towns are now finding themselves on the wrong end of a lawsuit when towns go forth and say, oh, three percent, and they, they've taken in many hundreds of thousands of dollars or a larger number. Now they're saying, well, that's not commensurate with the impact we've had on the community. Who want our money back? And so you're going to end up with some of that, and then there's court cases that need to go through the courts and get decided and all this. But now the Cannabis Control Commission, as we had talked about, what is it, five years ago now, has now inserted them in the conversation, and now we're going to become an approving authority over host community agreements. So before, it was always negotiated at the locality and done. Now it's going to have to get CCC approval. Like, my personal opinion, it's, you know, I don't think we actually ever needed a Cannabis Control Commission. I thought there was enough government resource available to the state already, but apparently we needed a whole other branch of government to just oversee cannabis. So here we are, but now they've got additional authority now to regulate your host agreements. So this, this, I don't know if this one will fall into that legislation or not. I'd have to look at the exact dates and everything else, but we should continue the discussion with Mr. Delatorre to negotiate one, and with those caveats.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Steinhardt.
The town attorney did inform me this afternoon that he had heard from the attorney for these, these gentlemen for this location, and they would be looking at the development of a draft host community agreement that would reflect the changes in Massachusetts general laws as well as the regulations that Doug just referenced to over the last year. So that will come forward in a newer version that will be reflective of those changes.
Great.
Right. I pretty much went over everything I was going to ask and say, you know, I, I followed along in the first webinar, and there's some questions that are left to be answered. You know, there's time limits now that are going to be on these host community agreements, and like Doug said, it's all commensurate to what, what gets, what it cost the town in a sense, so.
Smoglin, I know you're a busy person, but will you take the lead on this and work with town council and the CAO?
I don't think it's going to be that much different than the last one, so it should not be a huge time saver.
Any problems with that?
I have no problem.
Okay, all right, so Doug is going to be the contact person, you know, for the Board, you know, the town council is already in discussion, so, and like I said, we're not reinventing the wheel. We did this for an operation down the south end of town. So with that, I guess we'll see how it turns out, Paul. You know, you have a long relationship doing business here in the town of South. We hope it continues. We certainly want to see that site up and running again in some form.
Well, you're, you're the only one.
Where are you in your planning board process with this use?
So the planning board has approved the process, and I actually got a permit for to start to build that, for electrical work, and I've been back to the planning board, or I'm sorry, the building department for renovating the front building. And for some reason, I was trying to get the permit to go through, and we, I've been up there twice, three times, trying to get some information or something.
But you received a special permit from the planning board for the use.
I did.
Very.
I did.
All right, then I guess, thank you, Paul.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to the action items. Okay, the first thing is the selection of Par Corporation for the fiscal twenty North Lake Avenue Design Engineering Project. This is under the Community Block Grant Program administered by Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Gabriel Fuller is our new representative. I don't, I think we've talked to him on Zoom. I've met him a couple of times in person, but this is just for the design. So, and if you haven't been down to the North Lake Avenue area, go down there. I mean, that, it needs some serious work, and luckily, hopefully, we can continue to get the community block grant funding to finish this project down there like we did with the other Veteran Street and Bunglo we did. Was it?
Yeah, there's, there's been a couple of roads.
Down there. So if, if, any questions, or can we just act on a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation for Perry, Perry or Pear Corporation for fiscal year twenty North Lake Avenue Design Engineering Project.
In the amount not to exceed fifty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars.
Seconded.
Okay, we'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Yeah. All right. Let's see. Next thing I have here is a request from WIC three, three, eight Motocross to amend their twenty twenty-two calendar open practice of nine thirty twenty-two. If, if you've read the email that they are scheduling a Northeast Vet Championship event for October first, the event, according to Mr. Johnson, is getting a lot of traction. They have hosting riders from far away, from far away, including Canada. So he has checked with the American Legion to make sure that they don't have any conflicts. Okay, just, just for the record, Garcia, if you could just state your name.
Garcia Robb, from the American.
Come in there. Okay, thank you. Chief Landis, do you have any concerns?
No, I talked to Mr. Johnson. He doesn't expect it to be a large number, just, again, people come from all over, so I don't think it will have any impact outside of the realms. And we have control office around, so we're monitoring as necessary.
Okay, any questions, concerns, need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. We'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, next thing I have here, and Chief Landis, Chief of Police Landis is here, and this is a, looking to award a bid for the new Southwood Police Department Police vote to Max Corporation for the amount of one hundred twenty-four thousand, five hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixteen cents, and this is, the funding at the last town meeting was up to a hundred and thirty, so it meets that. Chief Landis, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this time?
No, I believe everything's in the package I am using to discuss that challenge. There's the hundred and thirty that was appropriated, what's left over will help with the graphics and just some of the smaller items like that and things like that if you think about it.
Okay, questions or concerns?
None.
Oh, okay, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to award a bid for the Southwood Police Department Police vote to Marine Max Corporation for a hundred twenty-four thousand, five hundred sixty-seven thousand, sixteen cents.
Need a second? I will second the motion. We'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. All right. The next thing is, I'm looking for a motion. We had two open meeting law complaints concerning the same August eighth meeting. I think Mr. Hanson referred to it in public comments, and we also have one from Angelina Simone of Ten Cedar Street Apartment Number Five. one from Angelina Simone of uh, ten Cedar Street, uh, apartment number five. Uh, I need a motion to authorize the chair and leave the council to respond to these uh, open meeting law complaints.
So moved.
Seconded.
Uh, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Yeah. All right. The next is a discharge of lean of uh, from fiscal sixteen. And this is again involving a Southwood Community Development Program. Uh, Kenneth Africano of one ninety-seven North Lane, Granville, Massachusetts. Uh, they're basically looking for us to subordinate um so that uh, he can get other financing. Uh, they believe there's still plenty of equity in the house, so they don't have a problem if we choose to uh uh, agree to this. And this is something that we've done in the past. And this would require the chairman to sign off on.
Motion for the chair to sign.
Seconded.
All in favor? Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Okay. This is the original Robin or no?
Yes.
Oh, it is. Okay. I highlighted it. So, but I think that's still legal.
And as you'll know, Mr. Chairman, that's for a property in Granville because we were the regional lead on that group, the community group application.
That is correct. And uh, and, and it gives us extra points when we do do things like that and a regional approach. It helped also with the food bank because that also serves uh, Granville and Talon as well as Southwood. Thank you, Mr. Steinhardt for mentioning that. Okay, the next thing I have is uh, to uh approve the Southwood Police Department updated policy for the School Resource Officer uh, for the Police Reform Bill.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, there was, there was two related C D B G actions. You took one of them for the Africano one. And the other one below that is the subordination for Johnny and Rebecca Hundley at four oh three College Highway, Southwood, Mass. So there's actually two separate actions for two properties.
I, I apologize.
Yeah, we have the one here for four oh three College Highway for Huntley.
Could you just read it off Doug? Cause I don't, I passed mine over to Rob.
The balance on the Huntley received housing uh, assistance under the program. Seeking a home equity line of credit. So it's a similar deal. Um, remaining balance on the nineteen program is thirty-one nine ninety-six with a forgiveness date of uh, April twenty-seventh, twenty thirty-five. New proposed line of credit is thirty-five thousand dollars. Praise value is two eighty-six thousand and the assessed value is two fourteen thousand. Thus, with a refinance, there still remains sufficient equity. I recommend that the subordination of this loan occur and that the attached subordination agreement uh, be executed. And again, this is for the chair of the board to select and assign. So I'd make a motion for the chair to sign.
I'll second. I will call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
You want to give me that back? Was mine? Did I miss that completely or?
He was trying to correct one missing from the other one.
Oh, I only got one.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, and these are all recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And this is needed for financing because we have to support our loan to what the uh, the new lending institution will give for credit. But at all times, we will maintain our um, amount of um equity as an interest in the property past the bank and above others.
Okay, Robin, I think they both signed properly. If not, I'll correct it tomorrow. Okay, now we're back to uh, uh, Chief Landis and uh, do you want to give us some sort of background on this?
So the uh, School Resource Officer position with the Police Reform and the updated legislation. It just covers specifically some of the rules and responsibilities um, of that officer. Plus it also incorporates um, some of the requirements and agreements we have with the school district in our memory and of understanding um, of the roles and responsibilities and how we um work together and what information sharing and um, at what levels. So it did provide you with a, with a draft. Pretty similar to what's being processed.
Any questions?
None. I'm familiar with it. Questions, concerns?
No, I'd like to take, have this understood next meeting, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, sure. We'll table this for action at our next meeting.
That shouldn't be a problem, right? Are there any concerns here on this one?
No, you know, we're, we're already working on the, on the Monday and Wednesday.
Okay.
Great.
All right. Next thing up I have here is to approve two one-day liquor licenses for Rugged Maniac on nine twenty-four and nine twenty-five uh, twenty-two to be held at the American Legion. Uh, the request is from ten A M. to six P M. Um, this is something that uh, they've done for quite a few years. The only, the only thing that I will mention, which I have mentioned for several years, is the Sunday opening. Um, I've always restricted it, suggested the board restrict it to twelve.
So my understanding, uh, Lieutenant been talking to the promoter is although the license is till six.
Right.
The event probably only go around three thirty.
Yeah.
Um, certainly the state allows someone about all ten o'clock on Sundays now. So it's certainly a new authority. It's your advice. We never really had any incidents, like we said, in the past. Yeah, the type of people that are coming here cycle through as they, when they attend the event, they're in groups. Um, they'll usually, they have a, um, beer line prior to leaving and they're generally underway. Um, but again, it's very important to watch.
I'm going to let the commander speak on this.
Thank you. Um, so the reason, reason being for the ten o'clock, well, the, the Legion bars open at ten o'clock on Sunday morning. Anyway, that's a standard set rule. Um, the racers start at like eight thirty, nine o'clock in the morning. So what happens is if they, they all get a drink. They come to the wristband. They all get a drink and that's part of their admission fee and stuff. So all those people, if we don't open up till noon or, or till late on either one of those days, we have three hours of racers that can't even collect their drink that they have paid. So they stand around and we have groups and groups, thousands and hundreds of people standing around the Legion just waiting for a couple of hours to get the beer that they're supposed to get when they finish the race. Because that's included in the cost of their uh, their purchase tickets. So what this, what we've seen in the past is all these people hanging around just clogging up the entire system. But there's not one for them now. Waiting for their beverage that they made. Because we can't open it. They're like, well, sorry, we can't open it. We can't, we can't give it to you. You know?
Yeah.
So that's why I'd like it to be at ten o'clock opening each day.
Just, just so everybody understands, this started years and years and years ago where we were asked by local clergy and other people uh, to restrain from allowing alcohol beverages before twelve. And we always kind of honored that request and have as long as I've been around. So it was a request made uh, something that we've had here too. I know the state laws have changed over the years, but um, it, I'll, I'll leave it up to the board uh, to decide. Um, discussion.
I hear the point. I think it's, it's always been to try to keep it till noon on Sunday, but I, the, the Legion's already open at ten anyway.
That is correct. Every Sunday we open at ten.
Jason.
I'm leaning in the same way Mr. Mogan is with the, I actually shouldn't assume. Um, but I understand completely your, the reasons for opening. Um, so I have to say.
I've done the Rugged Maniac. For a couple of years, we did it as a town team for a few years there and um you're at, people come and have one, just made it. It was tough. Let me tell you. Uh, Carl did it too. Um.
Yeah, where's that GoPro?
We burned that tape. We burned that. There's only one selected before he begins to file for an open meeting law complaint. There's only one of them. Um. This rocks correct. I mean, people come and go. They usually come have their beer and take off. It's not, it's not a huge, like a concert or a venue where they're coming to stay.
These are very healthy people.
So when is it? Well, not all of them, because I did it. Not all of them. Yeah. Um, is there a compromise here at eleven o'clock that we could let this go for Sunday? And that makes it a little bit more bearable for everybody that this thing starts.
I have no problem compromising.
Seems like a, a reasonable way to do it. And I think.
How about for Saturdays?
Saturdays, that's fine.
Saturdays.
Smoke and motion?
That's my motion for uh, to grant the two one-day liquor licenses for nine twenty-four and nine twenty-five. Saturday, nine twenty-four from ten to six and nine twenty-five from eleven to six.
I will second that motion.
Okay, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
There you go. All right.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Okay, next thing I have is a donation or several donations uh, to the animal shelter. And they wanted to go to the Southwood Animal Control Medical Gift Fund. Uh, total amount is one thousand, one hundred forty-eight dollars. Uh, we have Prospect Mountain Campground, Granville, Mass, three hundred and eighty-three dollars, Southwood Magazine imprinting of Southwood, Mass, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, Chablis Mobile of Southwood, Mass, five hundred and forty dollars. I need a motion.
So moved with our thanks.
Seconded. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan.
Jason Peron, aye.
Okay. And uh, Liz did send out a beautiful thank you note to everybody. So uh, it's greatly appreciated. Um, for the animal shelter. They, they, they like animals better than police, fire, everybody.
Marketing one-on-one, but dogs and babies, dogs and babies. All right, uh,
let's see. Uh, I need a vote to authorize the chairman and the C A O to finalize a letter of understand with, understanding for Southwood Deputy Fire Chief Selectee Jessica L. Bishop.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Okay. Old business. Mr. Steinhardt, old business.
Uh, yes, sir. Let's see, um. Been uh, participating in the Westfield Regional Dispatch meetings. And the bids that did come in through Motor Roller are better than the previous ones. So we're reviewing it as a two-step contract uh, in the event that additional funds may be necessary to outfit the radio equipment. That's going to be mostly needed for Southwood to be rolled into that system. And that would be through the E nine one one grant. So obviously that gives time for a supplemental grant application. And if that were to not be successful, then we would look at other uh, fund sources that we have as a community or do a contract change amendment to the equipment inventory. So um, we've been very well served by Mike Gerard, who's one of our previous uh, reserve officers and he's a part-time dispatcher. Now he had helped uh, uh, outfit the uh, town of West Springfield with their projects. So he has direct experience doing these types of projects. Uh, the other thing we have looked at is we're now lining up a part-time uh, Board Secretary for the Economic Development, Southwood Historical Commission, High Speed Internet Committee and Cultural Council in the next week. That had been identified as a budget issue last spring and uh, Mr. Dee Dee had led the way on trying to get that through the Finance Committee for Funding. So it is going to be a transfer from another department. So then we're going to have to do uh, backfill those other departments that are losing some um, part-time secretarial people. So that's what I have for old business, sir.
Well, and I skipped right over new business. So we're gonna, we're gonna go to new business for you.
Do you want me to go over that too?
Sure.
I just wanted to make sure, um, last week uh, Mr. Fox, myself, the police and fire chiefs and the planner met with EverSource uh, officials regarding just an expansion of their solar panel farm off of sixty-eight Feeding Hills Road. So there'd be additional solar panels that would be put in there as well as a um, a battery unit that would allow them to take that energy, store it and then send it uh, to the uh, the neighborhoods uh, when it's needed to even out uh, fa, um, power fluctuations. But also at the same time, there's been discussions about that also um, helping to be a power source during emergencies for the school campus. How that will take shape is still a matter of um, research to happen through engineers and design people. Uh, but this will also help them uh, fulfill some other issues they need to do along with the new laws that have been passed and signed by the governor. And um, I think Mr. Fox and I, we were going to ask the board to entertain a presentation by EverSource officials sometime either in late September or early October to give everybody a firsthand presentation of what's going on and a visual.
Absolutely. Uh, it was a very uh, informal meeting we had. Chief Landis was there. Uh, Chief Anderson was there from Fire Department. Uh, John uh, Goddard uh, was there uh, representing the planning board. Uh, Mr. Steinhardt, myself. Uh, this also helps uh, EverSource as Mr. Steinhardt has said, the new uh, laws that were passed, uh, the environmental justice, you know, uh, program with solar. Uh, so it, it was informative. Uh, there's a lot to be worked out, a lot of questions that need to be answered. Uh, we're kind of a, a, I think a test case for EverSource. Uh, they liked the the location. They liked uh, what they could do to the surrounding areas. So uh, I think they're going to be open to uh, working with us, but we want to be up, I have a presentation. We want to get this out so people are aware of it, understand this whole program and what the benefits would be to not only to the town of Southwood, uh, but especially to the, the neighborhoods in that proximity. Uh, could be of a substantial benefit to those people. Um, so with the board's blessing, I'm going to suggest the uh, first meeting in October, if that works with EverSource's schedule.
I have no problem with that.
Okay. Robin, you want to work with Carl and, and see if EverSource can make our first meeting? If not, the second meeting in October.
Carl, do you know if this is subject to planning board review?
Uh, ye- yes, it, it would go through the process uh, that um, John's board uh, works with all the time. It would be uh, because of changes in appeals and legal challenges through the appellate tax board. It will not have a pilot agreement. It'll be a fully, full and fair cash value taxation and so forth. So it's a green energy, solar farming type of approach uh, that has minimal impact. But yes, it will go through the same standards that the previous one did.
They just had one on Hudson Drive and there was a lot of discourse back and forth regarding the battery and the storage and containment thereof.
Yep.
Especially, and that one was in the wellhead. I don't know if this one would be within the wellhead or.
It might, it might partially be.
It's proximate to it. So sure.
Yeah, yeah. So, so i- it would be the same standards that the planning board already worked out for the, the other applicant at the other location. So it's already you know, a proven process for permitting and approving.
Excellent. That's why we had John there to make sure that uh, we weren't wasting everybody's time. To make sure that uh, we weren't wasting everybody's time. All right, so we'll set that up, uh, any anything else under new business, Mr. Steinhardt?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so the first thing I have under uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring something up under new business. If, let's get, if we can go through this and I'll get to you, okay? Uh, Rotary Club, uh, twenty twenty two vocational community service recognition nomination. Uh, they can contact the Rotary for that. Uh, the select board, uh. Note receipt of local government workforce skilled gaps report from Massachusetts City and Towns by Lieutenant Governor. Uh, I think that's very good reading for everybody to go over that.
That's very important, Mr. Chairman, because it speaks to the issue of how. Uh, finance offices and different municipal government positions throughout the Commonwealth. Are going to have to be trained and developed to backfill the ones that are retiring. So, and this is very important for assessors, treasurers, collectors, town accountants. Uh, people of that nature that can go through a process where they can become certified and credentialed. As all of our people are, but as we get into the future and we start to have turnover and retirements. This is a very important thing for both the uh, the governing board. Uh, to look at as well as a copy that I sent to the Finance Committee, so people will understand the context. Of just how complex these duties and these positions are in municipalities.
Right, and when you read the, some of the staggering information in here, that thirty three percent of treasurer collectors and twenty three percent of accountants. Auditors, controllers, uh, plan to retire within the next five years. And we've seen ourselves and and most of the communities in the Commonwealth. Are are about populations to ten thousand. Uh, there is a tremendous shortage. Um, uh, you know, of people that can meet these requirements. And we've seen that ourselves where we've had to hire people and uh, get them luckily, get them trained and certified, so.
Right, and that takes, that takes several years.
Takes several years, so this, and obviously, once we get them trained and certified. Uh, the word poaching comes to mind, uh, because obviously. Uh, they can then go on to larger communities for more money and probably better benefits. Than what we can offer in the town of Southwick, so, but this is a problem not just in Southwick, but the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts and probably. Other states as well. Uh, so there has to be a different perception of uh, these uh, positions in in the public sector. And they talked about a marketing strategy in the report, which I thought was pretty interesting. And different methods and working with the uh, local uh, state colleges and private colleges and community colleges. Uh, to start programs uh, that could assist municipalities. So. Everybody, if you haven't read it, if you could read it, I think it's 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 well worth it. And then we need a motion to authorize the select board to enter into an I M A. Amendment number two with the city of Westfield for the Sealer Waits and Measures Services. Uh, our agreement with the city of Westfield is gonna be running out. And that's where we have a mutual agreement, uh, their sealer waits also takes care of the town of Southwick.
Don't move.
Seconded.
All in favor, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Morgan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, um. Okay, Jason.
All right. During my campaign, there's a lot of this came up quite a bit, and I think it's time to bring it up, um, I would like this uh, select board to consider. Um, I'm not exactly sure of the complete process right now, um, for the town meeting in May to start to consider. Uh, a change to the recreational marijuana bylaw. Um, I would like to see the um. A dispensary allowed in the town of Southwick, um, just a few stats for folks. Um, Cannabis Connection, I spoke with uh, employees of there. Uh, over the last three years, they've averaged about twenty million dollars in sales, um. Based on the three percent, and there's addition, this just so people know, there's three percent that has worked into this in perpetuity. Um, not the additional H C A money, um, so three percent of that money comes back to the town of Southwick. Would come back to the town of Southwick, if that were the case, the Westfield receives six hundred thousand dollars. Um, just from Cannabis Connection, they have a second um, dispensary, which I have not been able to get the information for. Um, I know in two thousand eighteen, this. Failed to pass, um, I think a lot of that comes from the the misconceptions and. Misinformation that sometimes gets out there, um, I know a lot of people think. Along the lines of Cheech and Chong and gang bangers, um, that's not what these facilities are like. Like I said, I, everybody knows I work in Westfield as a police officer, um, we see no uh. Noticeable increase in any sort of crime or I can't even think of any. That have been related to the facilities there, um, they're in some cases cleaner, uh, and more well run than some doctors offices. Um, they're very secure. Um, the new legislation makes it interesting, as Mr. Mogan said. Um, with the H C As for the community impact fees. Uh, it is my understanding after talking to some of the members from Cannabis Connection and trying to get a little bit more information on this prior to uh, posing this. The H C As will run out in eight years, is that correct, Mr. Morgan, is that what?
I'm not sure.
I believe that's what I read somewhere, um, so that was an additional. Percentage that after so many years we would lose, but the three percent in perpetuity is something that comes back. To the town of Southwick, that six hundred thousand dollars could have pretty much funded two thirds of the roof, if not more. Um, I think it's something that needs to be looked at. Um, and put in front of the voters to make a decision if they wanna see it or not.
Morgan, any comments?
Um. We went to the ballot box twice, it's been a few years. I have no objection of putting it back to the voters to see what, to take a litmus test, I had the privilege of sitting on the. We did have a uh, a subcommittee of the planning board to which I was the select board designee along with Chief Ricardi. Um, Tom Fitzgerald from Board of Health, a couple of folks from the public, and we had a wide range. And I do mean a wide range of folks come in and talk on both sides of the issue. And the votes on both occasions were very close. We can revisit the discussion, the actual process to 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 change it, the the. Zoning bylaw that was put in by the planning board that was sent back from the subcommittee and then went further to a. Uh, public hearing and put the form and went to town meeting, it's certainly. Uh. Scoped to allow, um, there's different ways to formulate an overlay zone. To put, to cite a place, so that there was the forethought there that if, you know, that without a lot of work, it could be done. Um, there's a general bylaw in town prohibiting um, retail sale. That would have to be revisited and taken a look at at town meeting. Um, but I think we should, you know. I see no harm in continuing the discussion, I mean, it was something that was. It it's gonna be a hotly contested issue and and you're gonna, you're gonna piss off a bunch of the people, I don't know which half or third or. How it's gonna look, but we probably gotta take a look at it again.
Right, then why don't we put it on old business? And carry it on old business and digest it, look at uh, some method, uh, of, um. You know, what would, what steps would have to be taken, what the process would be and and uh, go from there. All right, any other new business, Jason?
No.
Mr. Morgan, any new business?
I just had a request, um. It it's more for the, for this board. I have some financial data that was presented to the high speed internet sub from the G N A. Um. Should that be presented formally or is a uh, email? Circulation of that information sufficient to be carried under future agenda?
I I think if if you just give us an email, you know, we can review it, and then when you feel that we need to meet with the ad hoc committee, then we'll meet them.
Very well.
All right.
And then you wanted me to cover the M M A stuff under old business as well?
Sure. All right, yeah, the only thing I had under new business was the EverSource, I also, uh. Today we met with uh, the promoter of motocross, uh, at the police station with also with Fire Chief Anderson. Deputy Fire Chief, uh, Stanowitz, uh, and several of uh, your command staff. Uh, to talk about, uh, you know, the different issues that arose uh, this past year. Uh, and and talk about the the planning for uh, next year. So I think I wanna commend the chief uh, for organizing that, uh, I think it was a good uh, step, it was a good conversation. And uh. Uh, Mr. Johnson is optimistic about the the future of motocross in Southwick and he even. Showed us a a seven page article in a magazine, uh, uh, promoting the town of Southwick. And uh, in the WIC, so. Um, so it was a a good conversation, I just wanted to make sure he knew that we had.
There's no other track like it, I've raced it many times.
There you go. Okay, we're moving on to old business now that, and we've already heard from. Uh, Mr. Steinhardt, so uh, I'm gonna go through here. First thing is uh, North Pond violations, uh, meeting with the Fishing Game D P uh, to review solutions. Uh, we had, I thought, a a very good, uh. First meeting, Chief Landis was there, along with Lieutenant Banish. Uh, we had our director from Board of Health, Alan Spite was there, Mr. Steinhardt, our C A O was there. Uh, um, Springer Poole, our Conservation Commission Coordinator. Uh, Dave McWilliams, the chairman and myself. Uh, we also had Joe Rogers from uh, Fishing Game and Jen Jones from Fishing Games. Uh, D P uh, did not attend, uh, but later on I asked that, uh. So, this pool will reach out to them to find out if they had any issues. Uh, because they had come to the meeting we had last fall when we had the um. Um, bulldozing that was done at North Pond. Um. But they said that the, at this time, and I think which which is good, they've kind of. Put it back into our local conservation commission hands to address any erosion issues, things of that nature. And obviously to make sure that uh, no other illegal activity takes place, so. So they've kind of, that was good that uh, uh, they seem satisfied at this time and we're not talking about any fines or orders. Um. This was the first that I think of several meetings that are gonna take place. Uh, the uh, fishing game is, we had questions of them, they couldn't answer, they're gonna get back to us. Uh, Chief Landis had some good input, uh, uh, conservation had a good input. Uh, so I think in fire had good input, uh, so I think we're we're heading in the right direction. Um. Obviously, we found out that Southwick isn't the only place that has issues like this. So they've, they've had methods that they've used in other locations. That have helped to address issues, so we're going to have additional meetings. Matter of fact, I've already met uh, again with Dave McWilliams. Uh, and we were talking about the use of the Community Preservation Funds to achieve some of the goals. They already have some funding and he's gonna get some clarification on what exactly it can be used for. Uh, to meet some of the uh, the things that we need to do. Uh, he's, uh, Dave has also worked with, uh, met with Chief Landis again. Uh, he's also met with our D P W Director, uh, for some of the material that we would be looking for. Uh, that the state would would help us with if they had it, but uh, they don't have it at this time. For example, boulders that would shut off access from, rather than putting up gates. You know, so, um, and uh, brush to uh, help uh. Put over some of the erosion areas to uh, help that decay naturally and prevent erosion. Um. Then again, today I even had another conversation with Mr. McWilliams. Uh, on on some of our security things, and we will be having. An executive session at our next meeting to address security issues. Uh, we're gonna ask Chief Landis to be here and uh, Chairman of the Conservation Commission, Mr. McWilliams to be here. Uh, so that we can go over any security methods that we want to implement. So, I guess the bottom line is, uh. One meeting, we didn't solve all the challenges that we're facing. And I don't think anybody thought we were, we're, we're, and I don't think anybody thought we were gonna do it, uh, but I thought it was a good first start. Very positive, uh, and Fishing Game came up with some uh, good ideas. Chief Landis, did you wanna add anything to that?
No, I think it's just about a learning exactly, and I think uh, educating our community on what really. It is to be in compliance, you know, what was meant in the agreement, um, the terms were, were. Um, brought forward and uh, so signage and uh, we're down there as much as my staffing will allow. But I know Mr. McWilliams has been down there trying to talk to the people, it's, you know, for passive, passive recreation. Um, so uh, signage is being put together now, there's more. Or the compliance just by educating people and. There for those that, you know, choose to continue to vandalize or use it outside of its means and, you know.
All right, thank you, chief. All right, Town Hall, uh, H VAC, I I believe, Carl.
That is up to bid, Mr. Chairman. That's been advertised and up to bid.
And I believe it's been advertised approximately one point six million dollars.
Uh, the the estimate is could be up in that neighborhood, but we'll. We'll see what the bids come back looking like.
Okay. All right, and then we're we're still trying to nail down, I believe, at an actual meeting. To discuss the sewer system I M A with the city of Westfield, we've been going back and forth and. And I think we're still trying for next week, is is that accurate?
I think it ended up be being pushed out to then, yeah.
Okay. But uh, soon as we can get all the lawyers, all the officials in one room. Uh, it should be a a good start and hopefully we can uh, uh, come up with an agreement that's uh. Fair to both the city of Westfield and fair to the uh, sewer users in the town of Southwick. Okay, and uh, we've already, I believe, accepted your request, Doug, to put a warrant article. Um, and I guess, are you gonna be working with town council to make sure that's drafted appropriately?
Sure.
Okay, all right with you?
That's fine.
Okay. All right, uh, then we still have the review of the Planning Board Comprehensive Impact Statement Handbook.
They're carrying that on their nine twenty agenda with the latest inputs from the last meeting.
Okay, uh, Military Leave, we're gonna be going over some of that, uh. Uh, with Labor Council and Executive Session with, in Chief Landis. Uh, I drafted out a letter uh, to uh, concerning the Beaver Hut, uh. On eighty one point Grove Road. Um, at the meeting, uh, Chief Landis and I asked Fishing Game after we concluded our other meeting. Um, we explained the issue in the letter that we had received. Uh, we were informed by Fishing Game that the uh, uh, beavers, if they were causing a health problem, the the person could. Seek a permit from the local Board of Health and if that was issued, could apply for a permit. Uh, from the state to remove the beavers, uh, they cannot be transported to another location. Uh, the other option would be to uh, uh, for the owner of of the marina to hire a trapper. Trap them during trapping season, again, they have, you cannot be moved to another location. Then the question of the actual, if once you've removed the beavers. Removing the hut and uh, Fishing Game. Uh, wasn't sure exactly, and it most likely to have to be turned over to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and Conservation. To decide how it would be removed. Uh, but it would have to be removed in such a way not to violate any wetlands acts and disturb uh. Different things, so, so I I basically forwarded all that information. As our our response to uh, to that letter. But uh, no easy answer. And did you end up taking fishing game down there for a site tour?
It's extensive and there were many, many beavers. Uh, so it's not something that's giving these some, a lot of habitat around that. That's well established in what, uh, fishing game is wanting out, so. But I think the removal of the beavers so it doesn't grow anymore might be the best resolution. We need to work with it. Um, what what that means for those docks are affected, whether it, you know, smaller boats that are needed to that location maybe. But, um, it's to a large, large.
Right. Well, actually, huh, huh, but it is not, it is, yeah, it is.
It is.
All right.
As long as they don't rent out the Beaver Hut, the parking of none.
Right. All right, next, next thing I have on here is the open, uh, meeting law complaint, uh, for the eight, eight twenty two meeting from Jeffrey Neese of Westfield, Mass, uh, town council. And I reviewed it. I asked him to review all the paperwork. He had, he watched the meeting online. We talked about all the, uh, steps we've taken since June. We talked about the the thing that you had developed, Doug. Uh, he went through the whole thing. Uh, bottom line, uh, uh, it's it's his opinion and he's sending that to, uh, Mr. Neese. There is definitely no violation of the meeting law. So that would be our answer to Mr. Neese, uh, Jeffrey Neese of Westfield, Mass. All right, the next thing, uh, research on public comments. This is something that I asked you to look at. Apparently, uh, someone didn't think I asked you to look at it, but but I'm not responsible for hearing it.
I thought you did.
Yeah, okay, and I'm sorry, I didn't didn't look at you directly. I apologize.
All right, that's fine. Okay, uh, like I said, I brought it up because of all the comments that it made be there. Prior to my, uh, appointment for the select board and whatnot, um, I compel everyone to please look at the Massachusetts municipal, um, association's guide regarding the meetings. Um, there are several members here, different boards. They understand how the meetings are run. Um, no one can be compelled to answer why they chose a certain way. Uh, there's, it's not technically a question and answer. There are some towns that do do this. Um, but the the simple answer is if anybody wants an answer from me, they can ask. Not here, or they can ask it and whether it's asked here or on an email. And if it's something I can answer, I will answer it. Um, is the accusatory, uh, and adversarial tones I've heard? Uh, uh, I haven't seen it here since I've been here. Um, and I just think I would like to see everybody kind of take the personal out of it and just be rational about it. I know there's hard feelings from other incidents and other things that have gone on around here. Uh, I just think, uh, fool heads prevail. So I wish there was more I could give to the folks here, but parliamentary procedure is parliamentary procedure. And people need to understand that. I will answer anything anybody puts in front of me, not here. Um, but that's all there is to it. I mean, I just wanted to make sure everybody, when I say I'm going to look into something, I look into it. And that's what there is, so just that's it.
Right. I had a thought. And I know that your police background, investigative, being able to investigate things. And I I I thought about some of the times we have people ask questions. Uh, I think we had a gentleman asked about, I didn't like the cell phone or reception. And then he didn't, uh, had a question about the post office. You know, two issues that we really have no control over. But what I thought about is when people ask questions like that, if we could get an email address or a mailing address. Now, here it is. I'd like to ask you as clerk, if you wouldn't mind taking those questions and and getting back to those people saying, look, post office, you really should contact the, uh, uh, your congressman or if you're not happy with the postmaster, talk to your congressman or talk to your U S senator, which I've done, you know, in the past for the post office. But I have a question. We could also, if if it's, uh, related to businesses not getting mail, maybe we could refer them to the economic development commission and see if they're, they would work with them to, uh, go to their congressman and U S senator or the postmaster and see if they couldn't do something. In, uh, in the case of poor cellphone reception, I I I'm going to leave that to you, how you would address that. Maybe send them to the town planner and he can explain our limitations.
Tell me the contact.
Right, and things like that. But if you'd be willing to take on that role, if anybody asks a question, I'm going to ask them for an e, to submit an email address, hopefully an email address, which would be easier or a mailing address. So that, did you do that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so and would you, I'll tell you what, work with our administrative assistant in in doing that.
Absolutely.
All right, so that way, if questions do come up, at least we have a system in place. Okay, right?
Uh, can I add one thing, a couple of things?
Sure.
So I don't disagree with anything that Mr. Proon said or anything that you said for that matter. And and Mr. Proon is also a hundred percent correct. If you read the open meeting law, the open meeting law is exactly defined as an open meeting law. It's to allow people to have visibility to how their government operates. It's not show and tell. It's not, it can be, it can be as the chair designates how they want to run a meeting. You can run a meeting without public comment. There's not a requirement under the open meeting law. It's just that the doors open, anyone can come in, watch their government work. Right? This board chooses to take public comment. Other boards have basically essentially Q and A or even practically, uh, uh, you know, uh, bidirectional meetings. Anybody can speak up at any time and and it depends on the forum and it depends on the thing. We've had meetings where it's gotten to that, where it was a very much a back and forth and a lot of productive discussion. And then there's other times when, you know, there's people in the audience that want to ask that it's public comment, not questions. And so it's kind of hard to answer those questions. I've sat here during public comment where people are asking some questions and taking notes and been castigated by the same person for not paying attention to what they're saying while I'm trying to take notes. I operate through my arm. If I don't write it down, I don't remember. So I apologize to anyone in the future that if I'm writing something down, it's for my own benefits. I remember to get back to you. The other thing is if people email the board of selectmen in for the select board and they email all three of us, you are not going to get a response from all three of us. We can't. That in itself constitutes an open meeting law violation with a three member board. So usually one of us will try Carl or the chair to say, hey, assign one of us this task. And we take the others off copy once one of us is assigned and we take it to conclusion. And if there's, you know, and I also try, if there's something of benefit, I think that would benefit more than just the person that asked. Can we carry it under old business and bring it back up for for some kind of response? Do we, are we perfect at it? No, will we ever be? Probably not, but we can get better. But this, it it is something I've always done is try to bring stuff up under old business. If someone brings something up either that night, which by the way, I did that one night and was absolutely extorted for bringing it up later in the meeting when half the audience had already gone home, but that's the time to do it. You had time to formulate your thoughts, take notes and and not in the heat of the moment when someone's asking, uh, you know, an argumentative question. So that's just my take on it. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Okay, any other old business?
Sure.
Doug? Uh, yeah, sorry. Uh, first is, um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to set forth the motion to allow the chair to allocate from the selectmen's gift account, uh, gift account or requisite amount of sponsorship for the police association golf tournament. That's Columbus Day weekend. Traditionally have done something like that. And I know we announced the tournament, but we usually do something with that. So I'd like to put forth a motion to, for you, for you to look at the sheet and how much it is or whatever.
Uh, a motion to extend the same amount of money from the selection.
Yeah.
Acceptable motion.
That's the motion.
Okay, I will sub, uh, no problem.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Morgan, aye.
Jason Proon, aye.
Got some money, Doug.
Okay.
Uh, second, I want to, um, again, thank, uh, the Southwood Police Department, the Southwood Fire Department, um, for another fantastic nine eleven memorial that was held yesterday. Um, they've done that for twenty one years straight. I hope it continues for another hundred years. Um, it's something we should never forget. Um, so thank you, gentlemen, for putting that on and, uh, Lieutenant, uh, Chief Landis and, uh, Chief Anderson, I mean, Chief Stefanowitz for shepherding that and and owning that. I'm much appreciated. Um, next was, uh, and also thank you to the Southwood Fire Department, Southwood Police Department and everyone in town, um, that helped make the, uh, one call away event that was held this past Saturday, uh, including the public safety appreciation parade that was held, uh, after the bike ride. A great event, very well attended. Um, God helped with the weather this year. It was beautiful and, um, um, that organization does great work for for veterans in need. So the town support behind that, um, to Dave Sutton and his entire crew was great. Um, I talked about the high speed piece. And lastly, I did attend a webinar from, uh, Masculine School on Friday. And they did talk about, um, one of the things that did come up was, um, the cannabis piece and the impact fees. And it was, I I knew it had in there eight years. Um,
I was right.
Correct, so it was eight years. Um, but it does expand, um, the triple C authority to the host community agreement, uh, agreements. And then there's now going to be a cannabis equity fund. And, uh, which include and part of the legislation includes expungement of criminal records for those convicted of crimes that are now technically or not technically that are legalized under the current law, um, which would be one percent of sales would be allocated to communities with a social equity component to a dispensary located in their community. Um, remote meeting, remote meeting law is now continued through March thirty first of twenty three. So when the situation we found ourselves when the last thing expired for a day will be right there again at the end of March.
Absolutely.
They never failed to take care of that on time.
Correct.
And chapter ninety, um, two hundred million. And the last piece was, uh, uh, looks for more for labor, but the, uh, economic development bill with the sixty two F from that nineteen eighty six law, that's going to cause everybody to wait to figure out how that, all the funding is going to work going forward on all the infrastructure stuff because of the, the money that under the eighty six law that's going to be refunded under about three billion dollars.
Right, we only have an eight billion dollar surplus, Doug. You can't work miracles, Doug.
I know, we try, but.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just to let you know, obviously, you know, the fiscal twenty three ARPA money, we did get the other, the original five hundred and nine thousand, half of the tranche, as they call it. And now we're still waiting for another nine hundred and forty six to come in. And I did check with the department of revenue and it still hasn't been released yet. So that is something that we're following. Last year, we we got it in a much more timely manner. So, but, uh, so we do anticipate receiving it. So, but it's not something we've needed to use or to think about now. But, uh, as Doug's talking about high finance issues, there's a lot still out there floating around.
And and lastly, and I don't want to forget is the, uh, I I'm working to get a meeting together with Dr. Muller, myself, um, and, uh, the health agent, Mr. White, to continue to keep all our discussion because it, it's still getting a lot of buzz through town about people. Uh, someone sent me an email that I knew was dab about people doing their own testing. And, you know, the only thing I can say to that from now, other than I learned a lot from lake management, uh, from Dr. Muller a couple of weeks ago, um, even our testing, as official as it is, it's still advisory because it's just where you test.
Right.
So we'll have more more forthcoming on that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for taking care of half of things I had on my list. So make it, I'm going to make it really quick. Uh, I just want to emphasize the COVID nineteen vaccination clinic that's being sponsored by our board of health. It's going to be on Thursday, September fifteenth, uh, three thirty to seven P M at Powdermill School Auditorium. Uh, you can walk right in as I, as I'm told. Uh, they're going to have Pfizer, Moderna available, including for boosters ages six months and older. And I know the call went out, I think this afternoon. Uh, so
Yes.
That's for, so that's for people that aren't registered under code red. And you can get registered quite easily for code red, just going by the website and and filling that out for people. Right, so it's it's an easy process and that way you've kept up to date on all things like that.
And you, you can just register yourself to get it as text mixes, just so that you don't get, um, annoying phone calls at bad times.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Steinhardt. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention, uh, was the senior center had an open house. Uh, very, uh, uh, I I had the pleasure of sitting with Chief Landis and Lieutenant Banish, uh, and, uh, right next to the local funeral. So, uh, it, but it was a very, uh, good time. I thank Cindy Sullivan and her staff for putting together, uh, uh, for the senior center.
We made some pancakes though.
Yeah, that's right. You guys had pancakes before I got there and I heard they were delicious. So, and the last thing I had under old business is, uh, this is a follow up on something you guys authorized me to do is meet with the police and the school uh, concerning security issues. Uh, uh, we had a, 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 I think, a very good meeting. Uh, we're going to do those on a regular basis now quarterly. Uh, that's the same time we reviewed the resource officer. Uh, so, uh, so I think you're going to feel comfortable once you read through that. Um, but bottom line is there's great cooperation between the police department and the school system. Thank you. I see we have two members from our regional school here tonight. Uh, that cooperation is critical to the safety of not only students but also staff. And, uh, I did encourage, uh, school and police. Uh, I mean, there's supposedly some grant funding that's going to become available. So if there's anything you're thinking about, uh, I would start planning it now, you know? Uh, because, um, I think as one of the officers said, we we live in a different time now. And so, but thank you, uh, chief, for, uh, heading up that meeting. Okay, with that, I don't see any other old business. So we will be going into executive session, not to reconvene. Uh, we'll be going into executive session pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter thirty A, section twenty one, two and three, and chapter two fourteen, section one B, Labor Council, litigation matters and strategies for collective bargaining with Southwood Police Coalition Unit and Clerk Unit, Town Clerk Treasurer Position. Executive sessions, you're going to my general laws, chapter thirty C, thirty A, section twenty one, two and three, chapter two fourteen, section one B, and exception two, move to go into executive sessions and conduct a collective bargaining session with non-union personnel to not to reconvene. Move to go to executive session, conduct contract negotiation with non-union personnel and not to reconvene in open session. Uh, to clear that open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and to not to reconvene in open session. Move to go to executive session to discuss strategy in respect to collective bargaining. Next, chair move to go to executive session to conduct strategy in session, preparations for negotiation, non-union personnel and to not reconvene in open session. Move to go to the executive session to discuss strategy in respect of litigation. That to chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body and to not to reconvene in open session. Regarding chapter two fourteen, section one B, persons shall have a right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference with their privacy. The spirit court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such rights and in connection therewith to award damages. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Morgan, aye.
Jason Proon, aye.